This is the next one.
What was it? In this, I come before you with mercy, peace. God, we pray for peace in our country. We pray for our community. We pray for each family that are represented up here on tonight. We pray that you continuously bless us, keep us safe. We ask this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
My ladies to the five United States. To your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just as.
Everyone, thank you for coming out tonight. JP, are we on?
Yes, we are.
We're good? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Our agenda will go ahead and probably get started with that. I will say we've got several topics that will probably be discussed, but if we can, commissioners, if we can put that to the end of the meeting and let's get through our business first. Okay, and so with that, let's start off with the approval of the minutes. You've got the minutes ahead in front of you. I can get a motion, please. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Mayor, I have a comment. So when I first looked at these, they looked fine. And when I read them carefully, I found that they were missing some items that would make sense. For example, we approved five sets of minutes at the meeting and like the dates aren't listed. I don't know. I mean, I have some changes that I think are important and my suggestion was going to be, because I didn't have time to write them all out. I can go through them if y'all want. You know, to give these to Karen and let her look at them and bring them back to us at the next meeting. Although I think it was really good, given that it was a four-hour meeting, that she went ahead and did that.
I mean, I think it's important to see them. The minutes are pretty much what we asked for. I know there was some additional language that needed to be added about that, you know, we had opened it up during the public hearings. But I don't, I don't know. I think we need to move it ahead. And so if you want to go through your changes, are they?
Okay, well, those, when you look at it, there's quite a bit, for example, unapproval of minutes. And this is I just basically should say the minutes for the following meetings and workshops were presented for approval. And I have the dates, regular meeting July 8th, budget workshop. And city manager interviews, July 20th, budget workshops, August 10th, commission regular meeting.
Okay, so basically what you want to do is you want to add the dates of the minutes that we approved.
Yes, and I think it's also important because otherwise we don't understand the motion. It's important to say the minutes were prepared in verbatim format, a change from the usual format.
You know, we're trying, we're trying to make these, and that was the whole point of that discussion at the last meeting, and I really don't want to hash this out again. But we tried to make these where they were just, you know, not such a exactly job to get through. And so the more we add to this is we've gone right back to where we were before. And I'm not sure that's where we want to be.
It's not back to where we were before, but if you don't say that the minutes, the five sets of minutes were in verbatim or transcript format, then Commissioner Burton's motion doesn't make any sense. Because there was a lengthy discussion about the format of the minutes. And if you just say she made a motion, there's no context for it.
Okay, commissioners, I'm going to leave this to you. And, and so we know that you want to add the dates. You're asking to add the date to the meetings of the most, of the minutes that we discussed, correct?
Right, where they'll be approved.
Of course.
And then to explain that those minutes were prepared in verbatim format. And then you will understand why Commissioner made a motion.
So we're doing in verbatim format, okay?
Right. And then actually, in the, under approval of minutes, in the second paragraph, it says Commissioner DeVito made a motion to approve the four sets of minutes. It was actually five.
Okay. That's technical, that definitely needs to be changed.
Right, because I remember one was added. We had, it was something.
Okay, okay.
So then on that first page, under presentation, in the first paragraph, the last name of Ivy, it should be Sauls, S-A-U-L-S.
Okay, that's a technical.
Right, and we still have an address for her. I was pretty sure that somewhere on the first page, Commissioner Burton made a motion to do something. I couldn't hear it.
Okay.
With the, whatever motion that was, it's not in there.
Commissioner, in the future, if you would do us, and Karen also, if we've got these changes, if you would just have them listed out so that we don't have to take this amount of time to get through these minutes. That's what we've been trying to avoid.
All right, well, this is a budget meeting, and I'm doing the best I can here. I'm just, some of these things need to be
Okay.
explained a little more, but I'm just looking for things. On page four, under Main Street Welcome Center Request, down at very bottom, on page four, it said I made a motion to table it. Cheryl Dayton did speak briefly about the Welcome Center proposal.
Okay.
It does not reflect that. Let's see. On page five, I have no idea. This would be technical under Resolution Number 2107, that first line, where it says, "A resolution of the City, press the City Commission authorizing the new local agreements." I don't remember whether that's actually how that reads or not.
Okay, Karen, would you check that when you make the final, when you did the final? Okay, any more, any other changes?
Yes. On page six. Well, at least it said the city manager did a presentation of the budget.
Okay, what's your change there?
Well, so basically, said to balance the budget, funds would be required from reserves, and the city manager presented options to reduce the funds taken from reserves. And that explains why I made the following motion, to delete the two positions. That was in response to his presentation. Did he give us that option? Then in the next paragraph where it says, "Motion to accept ordinance 21-6", these are technical, it says current, and it's abbreviated D E L, add, E E L, it should be add, really should be add the law. I think that's delinquent add the law.
That is exactly what that is, delinquent add the law.
Right, but it says add V E L.
She can spell that out, she can spell that out.
Got it. And then on page seven, under City Commission, the second bullet, the first one, I said, it says Commissioner DeVito expressed concern about the clearing of the RV park. And then the next bullet, it says Commissioner DeVito directed Charles Redd to speak to the African representative. I think that was the mayor.
It was the mayor.
Okay, and
And I have that change online. I just have that slide.
Right, and then there's actually, there's two words that are, so just a grammatical thing. On the very first page, going back to page one, under the four minutes, there's the word M A N O R, it should be M A N E R, common. And then on the very last page, under Commissioner West's comment, where he would like to see fine set of people and roaming dogs, should be, you know, T H E I R, not E R. I'm sure we have spell checked something for that, because I don't know.
No change. Okay, so Commissioner DeVito, is that all the changes that you have on that?
Yes, that's all I have.
Okay.
You did have mentioned adding that we did open that for public comment.
Oh. That would be a necessary change that I think we should put in there, that we did open it up for public comment.
Right.
Hearing.
Yeah, I had asked the city manager about that. That would be on page six. I think it already changed.
Karen's already made that change.
Okay, so the budget was open for public comment.
Yeah, Karen's already made that change. And keep in mind that, and as we discussed before, we also have our audio as backup, and we have a Zoom, so if there's any questions. So I mean, we're trying to keep this, this job of these minutes for Karen and for ourselves. Manageable. Manageable. So, okay, so we've got your changes.
Correct.
Commissioners, I'm going to put it to you. We have a motion on the table, and we have a second. Commissioner DeVito, do you want to make, do you want to make an amendment? What are you wanting to do with these changes?
Right, I would ask that we, that whoever made the motion, accept the, basically accept the changes.
Accept your changes?
Yeah.
Okay, so Commissioner Burton?
Yeah.
You accept the changes in your motion? Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Your second, okay, okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay.
And then we look to make another motion?
Minutes, Karen.
Talking about minutes. My motion is to allow Commissioner DeVito to go through the minutes, two days before the agenda goes out with the minutes, or the packet, make their corrections so that Karen will be, it'll be ready to go, we can vote on it and move on. That's my motion.
As we go forward, you have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Well, yes, I have some discussion. It's not just my responsibility to read the minutes.
But you do such a nice job of wrapping them up.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Commissioners, commissioners, this, we're not going to go down this road this meeting. We're just not going to go down this road this meeting. Okay?
Well, I, okay, for one, the motion is really new business. This is not really the time for the motion, which I've said, but as well, it is not appropriate to assign to one commissioner to review the minute. It's all of our responsibility, and it's the city manager's responsibility, and it's the staff's responsibility. And I have other things that I do to prepare for the meeting. And I've never in my life seen anyone assign a commissioner responsibility for proofreading the minutes and being responsible to provide those changes. Would someone like to withdraw the motion?
Do you like to withdraw your motion?
No.
Okay. We have a motion. Do you want to withdraw your second?
I will draw my second.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we now any seconds at this time, Commissioner West has withdrawn a second. Okay, see in the second, the motion fails. Okay. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the floor to public comments. Does anybody have any public comments that they would like to share with us? You shared earlier, somebody would like to share.
Scott King, 721 London Avenue. Yeah, I'm trying not to cover up for every meeting. I realize that I do. But I did want to recognize Mr. Redd. We had a little issue with the Central Avenue, and boy, I reached out, and two hours later, I got an email back with some more information, a couple of emails, overnight bang, the problem solved, and very quick, very professional. I want to thank you. I want you to want to make sure you do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott King, did you say your address?
Yes. Yes, he did.
Oh, he did?
721 London Avenue.
I was just so excited. We had somebody to speak.
Question?
Yeah.
The blowout worked. I didn't know if Mr. Redd wanted to introduce any guests that he might have.
And I'm going to leave that. Would you like to introduce during public comment right now? Do you want to introduce your?
She's going to kill me. My wife is still there, sitting in the back of the room, isn't nice at all.
I wonder who she was. I didn't recognize the face.
She spread me, wonderful spread on her birthday last night, dinner, Brazilian dinner. My son showed up surprised. He told me he was working out of town. So it was a very nice surprise. I was thrilled.
How cool.
Yeah.
Very good.
And she probably echoes your sentiments, Mr. King, on Sunday. But most days, I'm sure she echoes this. So with that, do we have any other public comments? Okay, see, and I'm going to go ahead. We're going to close public comment. Let's move on to our business items. You want to start us off?
Okay, this, this first item is an authorization to execute an agreement with the Florida Gas Utility. And this item was presented to you during the budget workshops. Florida Gas is an opportunity for a bulk gas purchase, get a great rate. And we have the option if those rates don't turn out to not be so great, we can withdraw from any agreement. So it's a, it's really a win-win for us, and I recommend the agreement.
Commissioners, do I have a motion of approval?
A second?
Okay, wait a second. I've got to figure out, move that. Commissioner Burton did.
We did it in stereo.
Okay, so Commissioner Burton has a motion. Commissioner West, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
I think this was explained to us in detail at a prior meeting, correct?
Yes, at the workshop.
So a lot of same parts there.
Okay, see, no, let's go ahead. You've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
The next item actually is an authorization to execute an agreement with Florida Victorian to salvage wooden materials from the former side of the prior demolition. This may be an item we want on table, because really, we have not actually had a formal vote to demolish the building. And this would actually seal, seal the deal. We make this arrangement. This company was going to salvage the flooring, many of the roofboards, doors, anything in there that was of some value, would offset the demolition cost. We would then need to rebid the demolition because it would be, it'd be less structure, less debris, so hopefully a lower price. But I really do want some affirmative direction. This is the direction we go, the will of the, of the, at least the majority of the commission. And this meeting being a special meeting, not normally on people's radar, I think perhaps a normally scheduled meeting might be more appropriate for that kind of.
Do you think, well, this is something that we could discuss in the October?
I think so. That's a regular monthly meeting, be more on people's radar, if they had an interest in the building. The thing, you know, we had talked about, we could, other way on, we could sell it to someone who wouldn't want to restore it, as an example, for a price, you know, not, we wouldn't give it away, those kind of things. So I'd like to have that, then get have a vote, have a direction.
That would allow more of the public to, to weigh in on this. This is a, this is a big decision for the commission. There's a lot of history there, Commissioner Banks, as you know, especially in our Black community, and have come to speak out to me and say, you know, if you continue to take it away and you're not giving anything back, you know, where is that going to leave this history? And so I think we, as the commission, this is just something that we just have to really put some thought in and make sure that the public is aware. It is in really bad shape. I've walked through it. I don't know how many of you have had that opportunity, you've walked through it too.
I have, I have a couple of comments to manifest, actually.
So, so let's, if everyone is good with that, and we'll have a motion.
I would move to table.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I see I can make the meeting.
Yes. To the October, to our general meeting in October.
Will we have it ready in October? Is this five, is it one, whatever? I mean, we actually have, will we have it ready to actually be discussed in the next day or two?
Well, I, I think it's ready tonight. It's just that we didn't really, really notice that we would have that, have a discussion. This is an extra meeting for the budget primarily, so we thought it'd be better.
No, I guess. So I think we'll be ready to make some, a decision on, on that night. And so, okay, so I need a second, or a second?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, right, second. And I, I have just a couple of comments about it.
Okay.
Okay, so I asked actually several weeks ago, and he forgot, and I forgot, and I reminded him, in your packets is a copy of the United States Department of the Interior National Register of Historic Places listing of our historic district. That should be in the back of the packet.
I think that's something that we were going to talk about at the end of the meeting too.
Okay, but this is, so if you look on page 15, the New Moon Lodge, it's 107 North Main Street. This is the discussion I wanted to land.
We're, we're good. This is, let's get this over with, with the Sonic, so that we're ready on the October meeting. Yeah, we're, we're good, this is, let's get this over with, with the Sonic, so that we're ready on the October meeting. Commissioner Burton, I'm allowing her to continue. Commissioner DeVito, I want you to please keep this to the Sonic watch. I know, I just want to make sure that we say on the Sonic watch.
The Sonic watch, I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
That on page fifteen, that's the documented folder, it's one, it's listed as a contributing structure. It's listed as the Newman Lodge, built nineteen oh eight, and it's one oh seven North Main Street. So I'm saying it is part of our contributing buildings to the historic district. As well, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the pre-demolition asbestos.
Okay.
So we have lots to do.
We have more to do on this.
Okay, so, I wanted to bring that into everyone's attention, so this is there.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor of tabling this until our general meeting in October. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, nay? And we are going to table, the motion passes. Charles, you want to start with?
The next item is a, a request to purchase two mowers, this would actually be for next fiscal year, in a better place. As I outlined in the memo, we actually did very, very well in finding generators, we advised it at seventy thousand dollars for generators. We found two, it's a fraction.
Okay, wait a second, we're, we're on the asbestos survey.
Oh, yeah.
Which probably, on the asbestos survey, we probably will want to table that one as well. Are you ready to table that one with the asbestos survey?
Um.
No, no, no.
Don't you need to? I mean, actually, yes, you want to table the asbestos as well.
That's, that's, that's a.
Because if somebody buys a building, maybe whatever.
They can do that, we don't want to have to extend that until we've decided what we're going to do with the building. That's twenty-five hundred dollars.
I agree.
Well, yeah, that's actually seven C. So you want to do the asbestos stuff? Recommend me table the asbestos stuff.
Mine must have a different one, I apologize, because I have seven C, I have it in seven C. You have it in seven C as well, okay.
Oh, I do, okay.
So, yeah, I think you should table that as well.
Okay, so do we have a motion to table the pre-demolition asbestos survey proposal?
Yes.
And we have a second, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion?
Okay, well, my comment about that was, from my point of view, I was surprised that we would table it because getting the information about whether there is asbestos, but it's my understanding that that informs both how marketable it would be, and as well, if we are going to move to demolish it, it would, it makes a big difference in the cost of demolition, and right now, we do not know how much money we would need to budget, so to me, it seems like that would be money that we would, to, to be prepared to make a decision, we would want to know about the asbestos one or the other, that might not have any, that might have some.
Charles, do you want to weigh in on that, because I, I thought that we should, it's my opinion that we hold on until we know exactly what we're going to do with it, not expend our money. But do you want to weigh in on this?
Um. You know, I can, I, I see your point to feel like we might need it one way or the other. However, if we were to choose to just sell the building, someone said, I'll, I'll restore that building. And we had that conversation, it would be on them to, to do that survey of the October, you're going to save the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Just for right now.
It would delay it, maybe three weeks to, to the fourteenth.
Okay, it was timed by me, I just wanted to bring that forward, so to make sure we consider those options.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any more discussion? See none, major vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, nay? Okay, we will table that until the October meeting. Okay, now you can go into the mowers. You get onto your mower.
So we don't want to purchase them until the new, until a finance director says, okay, we're, we're good to buy things in the new fiscal year, but we didn't want to wait till fourteen, because we get a, we get to trade in our existing mower as long as it's running. So we want to.
As long as, keyword.
And we're getting a good trade-in for it, so we'd like to get those two new mowers to help get the job done.
Some of you.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second for the purchase of these mowers?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
No, I wrote something that I would like to say about this, about the mowers.
Okay.
I know nothing about mowers, but I really think we should thank staff for, once again, finding us a good deal under budget.
Yeah.
This has happened quite a few times, this is way under budget, so whoever found this.
Yeah, that's what. Keith and David, though, they do an outstanding job.
Very good, yeah.
You're trying to keep us, trying to keep us going very, you know, proficiently and.
Hasn't what, so it's just a written, um.
So thank you for thanking them, okay? That's your only special comment?
That's it?
Okay.
I know nothing about.
With that, we have a motion to purchase these two mowers, and we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, nay? Got your approval of the purchase, thank you very much, and please make sure you pass that on to both of them, the commission appreciates them. Well, Keith, Keith is the, Keith is the one, not David on this one.
The next item there is the approval of Resolution number twenty-one oh eight expressing the city's opposition depending by what's ours permanent application. We have a, um, round resolution, and then there's a suggested resolution, more extensive language. So you can, you can amend the resolution as presented or adopt a new language, it's up to you.
And this was language on the, um, the, the new languages, this was language of sitting down and Ivy and Ashley and, um, I'm so sorry, I've gone blind, but anyway, this was, this was their suggested language when we sat down and worked on this and kind of hashed it out a little bit, this was a little more detailed. As you know, this is still moving forward, the County Commission had a workshop, and this was discussed at the workshop, and so right now, I know Commissioner Pickens, he, um, you know, encouraged all the commissioners to write DEP and the board, and, you know, showing their opposition, they're trying to figure out what they want to do at this point, if they want to do a moratorium, if they want to do a ban, how they want to handle this, so I see this coming up probably this next month for more discussion from our County Commission. My understanding also is that the Adjustment Board that has been moved to possibly a February meeting at this time. So they keep moving, they don't have all the information, they, so they just said, they're not ready, so they've missed their demo. But anyway, it keeps moving on, but at the same time, we just don't want it to sneak up on us, so. So commissioners, we have two different resolutions here. Yes, Commissioner DeVito?
Okay, I looked at both these resolutions, and I have one question for Bobby. Then I have a comment about the longer one with the more detail. The only thing that I don't see in the longer one, I don't see anything on the adverse impacts to our economy, which I think is, I think that's something in the shorter resolution.
See, well, it's in there, in that it has, um, hold on, let me find that.
It says quality of life, but I don't see.
It says importance to local economies and agriculture.
Where's the last?
Third paragraph.
Yeah, I knew that we put something in there, I mean, there's only some that you can put in these resolutions, and we had a lot of language, and we had to, um.
One, two, three.
To local economies and agriculture.
The third paragraph, the second sentence. Thousands of residents in the region important to local economies and agriculture.
So we've got that.
Right, we're talking about the Floridian aquifer. My, my, my concern is that for the city of Crescent City, and to me, I would like to see us say specifically that the adverse impacts to water quality of Lake Crescent and nearby lakes would have a negative effect on our property values and our economy.
All right, I think I have a solution to this. I have the word copied to the, to the larger one, and I can just add that in, so if y'all wanted to vote and pass it with those changes, I could make those changes and increase on it.
Okay.
I think that would be the easiest way to go about it.
Okay.
To me, we're speaking for us, and.
Okay, so where do you want to, where does, where, which paragraph, which whereas?
Well, wherever. About before, now therefore, does the very last one, because that would be specific to us.
Why can't you add it in there, the whereas, right about that, the city of Crescent City understands the negative impacts on air quality, quality of life around other similar sites around the country, and go forward with the, um, with the economic impact. If you're adding, Karen's already having some difficulty because we have enough of this, as far as the signatures on it.
Right.
So.
That's fine, wherever Bobby wants to put it in.
Do you see that Bobby, for the now therefore?
The one right above it. So it would just read, think quality of life around other similar sites around the country, and would have a negative impact on the city's economy and property values?
Yes. That's it.
Okay. Okay, with that, commissioners, do we have a motion on this, with that change?
I move with the necessary amendment.
Okay, we would have a motion to do that.
No, you can, I'm sorry.
Great, who, did we have an original motion and second?
No.
And this is.
We haven't had, no.
Okay, well, I'll second that.
Okay. Um, okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? No further discussion, okay. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, nay? Okay, motion carries, resolution, Bobby, you'll help with those changes?
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll get it to you, Bobby.
Thank you. Okay. Who, who do you want to, which one do you want to read it?
Well, this is the natural gas.
You know. Wait a second, I apologize, we got all into this, and I did not ask for any additional factual testimony, so I really need to go back and do that. Okay, so at this point in time, do we have any additional factual testimony for or against the bio solids resolution? I see none, do we have any public input? Go away, okay, no public input, but then, okay. With that, we've already taken a vote, so I just wanted to be noted that we did open that up. Go ahead.
All right, it's the second and, and final reading on ordinance number twenty-seven. Yeah, ordinance twenty-one oh seven, an ordinance of the city of Crescent City relating to natural gas service providing billing rates, for billing rates, fees, and charges for natural gas service, amending service power ordinances relating to natural gas service, providing for separability, providing for compulsion, right, perspective.
Open this up for additional factual testimony for or against on this issue, do we have any? Seeing none, come forward, what about public input, do we have any public input? And then, I'm going to close public input, commissioners, do we have a motion on this ordinance? Second reading of this ordinance.
I know that we accept ordinance number twenty-one oh seven.
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second, commissioners, do we have any discussion? No discussion, I'm going to go ahead and with this, we're going to do a roll call, Karen, please.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye. Okay. Motion carries, will this be approved?
The next one is the second reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero six, an ordinance providing for approving and fixing the budget, setting the mileage levy at eight point five nine one four, allowing for general operations of the city and its various departments, approving and fixing budgets for special funds and debt service for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two. And this is just the budget reflecting the changes we made in the first reading, removing two positions, and adding the line that we will use sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars in that sense in reserves if we were to expand the entire budget.
And those are non-recurring, correct?
They're non-recurring expenses.
Non-recurring expenses. And the positions that we removed, those are not necessarily off the table, because it's off the table at this time until we see where we are.
Correct.
A little further down, and you can bring those back to us.
Correct.
I just want to make sure. Okay, I'm going to open this up for, oh, I, I do want to say also, in case anybody asks, our, our company is not in this, correct?
Correct.
The budget.
American Rescue Money is not, uh, I don't want it in the budget, because we haven't decided where to put it, we'll do a budget amendment, add that in once you make deficits.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to go, I'm going to open it up for, um.
Don't we?
We. Do we have a motion to accept this budget?
I second it, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and second, I'm going to open it up for additional factual testimony for or against. Do we have any speakers? You probably are going to come under public comment, okay? Okay, seeing none, come forward, do we have any public input? Yes, ma'am, if you would come up, introduce yourself, state your name and address, and speak into the mic.
Nancy Taylor, sixteen North Summit, I'm president of the Crescent City Library Board, and I want to thank y'all in advance for your generous donations to the library every year, we really, really appreciate it. And the other thing has nothing to do with the library, but everything to do with the budget. Y'all's budget was multiple pages, multiple line items, was one, one hundred of the Putnam County budget. The Putnam County Commissioners were given one eight-by-eleven sheet of paper, and asked to approve the budget on that. So thanks, y'all, y'all doing a good job on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing no one come to the podium, I'm going to close public comment at this time. Commissioners, do we have any discussion regarding what we have before the budget?
I wish there was something I would like to say about the budget. One of our non-recurring items, I think, is Clarion. I'm getting concerned, I think the original proposal from them was to be there six months, and I think we're at that six months or over. That would be an item that we could reduce, we have not had reports from them, and I think we have to give them thirty days notice. But that would reduce our deficit as well, I mean, I'm noticing we are spending more and a lot more in the finance department, partly because of Clarion, partly because we're still consulting with Ms. Peacock, so I'm just getting very concerned about that expenditure, and then as well, you know, I think it's important that we not make significant budget changes as possible in the middle of the year. We had a ninety thousand impact because of our sour change, which we did not have a lot of data for. And as well, in the future, we know we're going to have to get every employee to fifteen dollars an hour by the Florida constitutional deadline, I think.
By twenty twenty-six.
Right, it's going to be five years.
Got that on our schedule.
Right, so there's a couple things. I think we need to do some strategic planning, and as to how we're actually going to get those, identify those positions, and how we're going to get them there.
Okay.
And the, the other thing is, I noticed one thing that we don't seem to have as a schedule, we have a lot of equipment in the city, and the staff does a good job of finding good deals for us, but I've noticed over the years, we don't seem to have a schedule for that expensive, heavy equipment, and when it's going to age out. And I think that would help us plan over the years, I mentioned that to Charles, so you know, we're doing good, we get good deals, but I think it would help us to know when, you know, when we're expecting, of course, there will always be something unexpected. But I think that would help us. So.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I, she brought up a good point, we really need to. Look at some of our equipment. That is aging and some of it broke down. And I think some of the key elements, we, as a city, we need to depend on the city, we can't depend on everybody else with different ideas. Because when the citizens, they're not gonna call the county, they're gonna call Crescent City. Yeah, because we remain souls. And so we need, what we need to take care of Crescent City.
And I think as we go forward, I know that we, they're starting to open up that discussion with the county on our. Yes, sir. Then. That's gonna probably get some, gets a little more evident to us as far as what we need and what we don't need. Okay, I said as we open up with the county on our interlokal, it's gonna become a little more apparent as far as what we need and what we don't need.
Okay, what's, what's interlocal?
I mean, our interagency, it's our.
Our interlocal.
Our interlocal agreements with the county, with the county, they haven't been addressed since, I believe, nineteen ninety five?
Exactly.
Nineteen ninety five.
Okay, sorry, when you turn that way with the math, it doesn't broadcast.
Thank you, I know, and I have a delicate voice anyway, so. So I, I, I agree and Charles, that's something I guess you would work with Keith on.
Yes.
Keith and David, I guess also because I know he has a split in it too between our trucks and all. And that has come up this year, you know, it has come up a lot this year. Fortunately, our staff is, is very skilled and they keep it going, they just keep it going and keep it lumping along. But, you know, we need to help them, we need to help them as well, so thank you for your comments. Okay, with that, do we have any other discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, Karen, I'm gonna ask you to do roll call please on the motion in a second.
Commissioner Burton. Yes. Commissioner Mays.
Yes.
Commissioner West. Aye. Mayor Myers.
Aye. The budget passes. I know Robin and Charles can play. They go home tonight and possibly sleep. Thank you everyone that worked on this and helped us get through this budget. Okay, with that, we're gonna go to Charles for your city manager report.
Yes ma'am, first thing is I did have some tentative dates on our strategic planning, I wanted to run them by you to see how your calendars work. With that, these proposed dates. They're gonna, this, this is actually my report, it's not in your packet. We're gonna do two meetings for strategic planning, the first one will be a public input, not like a presentation, but it sort of tables around the room. With areas of interest, like economic development or quality of life, and people will be able to provide their input. And so we'll keep the meeting open, it'll start at four o'clock and we'll just keep it open until into the evening, folks can come after work or after dinner. That would, that would be on November the third. At four o'clock.
Will you not be here?
I will not be here that week, a year ago, I made plans to put money in and I won't be here.
That's, that's all right, actually, that's the, that's the public input meeting, the meeting I would need you at would be November the tenth. Would be at three o'clock. Where they will just work with the commission using the input that we've received from that previous meeting as well as the comprehensive plan, public input.
So the November third one's gonna be with the public, to get the public.
It's good.
And we'll keep this on Zoom as well, won't we, so that Commissioner West can watch this? Is that?
I don't think to be picky about this, but when did we vote to do strategic planning meeting, did we even vote on that?
We did not, I just recommended it.
Yeah, he recommended it.
It's one of my goals, to get a strategic plan.
For us to do a strategic plan, we have no strategic plan, we have, we have no roadmap, we have no roadmap.
But, I mean technically, we should vote to do it, I mean, to me, it should be a proposal and.
Okay, do you wanna make, do you wanna make a motion that we?
Yeah, I would like to move that we accept the city manager's recommendation that we conduct. Strategic planning using the Portland League of City senior advisors, is that not what it's?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? We have no discussion, okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, motion carries, okay.
Thank you, the next item is the, I would notify that the tax collector's office has subterranean termites.
Wait a second, Charles, I'm gonna make sure, is that clear with your, everybody's calendar? November third, with the public.
I'm for the public, it's the second.
And then November tenth would be with the commission.
We had talked about that, I think that was a potential date, the second. Right, that we're, you're giving us the third and the tenth that we can.
And time has changed at this point and these gentlemen are.
They're retired.
They're retired and they're having, they're having to drive home, they're trying to accommodate. Everybody through this and say we can stay into the evening.
And on the tenth is at three.
Okay, is that three P M?
Yeah.
One, I permissioned Burton to know she wasn't managing things, we really did throw that data, we knew it was.
Okay, so everybody's good with those dates. I don't think I need a motion, I don't think we need a motion for that, but we're good with the dates, okay, okay, you wanna go?
So the termites, so there's subterranean termites in our, the building we leased to the county. And they discovered that in doing the renovations they were doing. They were given a close two thousand dollars for the treatment, and so I request you to authorize to spend two. Approximately two thousand dollars for the termites.
Okay, and do I have a motion?
I surrender.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, we're having discussion.
Well, my question of, where would the money, where would we be taking money from? We should really identify that, and that's in this budget year, correct?
Well, it would depend on when they bill us, actually, they scheduled the treatment, we're almost to the end, it would depend on when they actually conduct and bill the treatment. It might be next fiscal year.
Well, I mean, just shouldn't we have some idea where we're gonna take it from, because.
I'll, I'll look at the facilities line, our facility maintenance would make sense to me, see what's in there.
And she. Linda Myers, she took on the whole expense of. Paying the hurt that building and all the woodwork that had to be done because the whole facade was rotted. So she paid for that out of her budget, we did pay for the dollar title building, but the building looks very nice. Really has made a big difference down there, so it looks very nice, so.
So they're gonna come in and give us a quote for this, correct?
Well, the quote I was given was, I didn't receive the quote myself, from the, from the tax collector's office was the two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars, well. I mean, that's a necessity.
Yeah, because.
It is.
I'm just asking, do we have a place in mind to take it from?
We're gonna have to figure out a place.
Yeah.
If not, they'll take the building from us. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay.
The next item is, as you're aware, we have an open FERDA grant for the park. We call it the dog park or the.
Fletcher Park.
Fletcher Park. And in order to get a, order to proceed with our grant improvements, we need to do a boundary survey. And we got one quote from an engineering firm for fourteen thousand dollars for the survey. So I got another quote from a surveyor, B C F Palaca, I was bringing my Williams Snyder, a little twelve hundred dollars. So I recommend requesting authority to execute a contract with Mr. Snyder to get us a boundary survey for Fletcher Park so we can move forward with that.
Yes, sir, that's absolutely.
Did I hear you right, your first one, the name is fourteen thousand?
Yes, sir.
Surveyors are in, are in big demand right now, so they can pretty much name their price, I think.
To me, that says we don't wanna do your.
Thought that there was one, but they have not been able to locate, I know everybody's turned the office upside down and all around and. All, all the records trying to find where there had been one previously, but there was not one, so they're have to go forward and without this. Charles, it's my understanding we can't apply for any of the others.
We can't get another FERDA grant till we close this one out.
This has been going on for some time, which one is this?
This is the Fletcher Park, that we, some trail improvements. Some improvements to the kayak launch, some improvements to the bathrooms, it's kind of a miscellaneous list of improvements to that part. And it's, it's been open for, I think Mr. Kennedy actually applied for this grant when it started.
We've been talking about it a while.
Yeah.
Again, we're just trying to do some house cleaning, this is part of that, and, and Mr. Fox brought it to the attention that we've got to get this done.
Yeah.
Before we can go forward with anything else. Okay.
I think there was, I remember back when I was still was here, we were looking for the survey and I guess it was done by a company to apply on another company. And they said that it had the stuff in some warehouse somewhere and they weren't really good look, so I do remember.
Okay, so we have a motion for a survey, Bobby don't have a motion yet, I need a motion, do we have a motion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any more discussion commissioners? There being no discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, okay, motion carries.
The next item is, our November meeting falls on November eleventh, and the city hall typically closes on Veterans Day. So I'd recommend we move that perhaps to the ninth, the Tuesday before or whatever your pleasure is, but. Particularly closed and observance of Veterans Day.
So we move it to November ninth?
That'll be the Tuesday before.
Okay, and then we're here on the tenth also, correct?
For the.
For the other, for the other, so we have those two days in a row, okay. Okay, commissioners, do I have a motion?
I surrender.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Everyone's okay with that, so at this point in time, we have a motion to move our November eleventh meeting to the night at six. P M in the evening. All in favor, say aye.
I'm excited, it's just a follow up for resident Mr. State, Mr. Tatum had come and spoke at the last meeting. About some issues, they did go out to the property, looked at the issue, then we are researching some solutions to the problem. Just wanted to know that it's in process.
That problem, that piece of property, that problem has been ongoing for years and years. It just, all the water comes down that street into their yard.
But you've met with Mr. Tatum. Working on this.
Which street is that?
That is Lakeview and Lake.
Yeah, Lakeview and Lake. Well, and, you know, to back up, our resolution on bio solids is about the environment. And the concern that I've had is what we can do to protect Lake Crescent. I know under Central Avenue, there's a vault. But, you know, we have these streets that are just direct pavement.
They are, they're an issue, we've talked about, we've talked about that, but the.
Right, I mean, one reason the poor Mr. Tatum's yard is a problem is because the street just goes straight down to whatever with no. Nothing, nothing in the pavement to stop the water or let it percolate down, so.
And when these rainfalls we've had, this is just been, they've lasted, I think they've lasted two years.
The other night, well, we had like four and a half hours of car rain that didn't stop.
I mean, everybody is, is dealing with issues they really haven't ever had to deal with or seldom have to deal with, so.
That's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm gonna end it up, Mr. Pickens, do you have to report that?
I do have. A couple meetings back when we tabled or put off the code magistrate thing. I was, y'all asked me to look into see how interlokal did it, it wasn't exactly how, and I don't think it's something that y'all would wanna do, but I'll still throw it out there, so. What they do is their ordinance allows them to either hire a magistrate on a, on a case by case basis or through the interlocal agreement with the county, use theirs. And also have a code enforcement board, I believe the reason for doing that is if they can't get it formed for their code enforcement boards, they can continue to move forward with the hearings and not put them off. And just have to use the code magistrate, but I still think that people will come back and would ask the city commission if they could lower their fine, which is. As I remember is, well, something y'all were trying to avoid, I do think that you may be able to. We could craft an ordinance that maybe took that off of the city and maybe allow the board to make that decision whether to go down on the fines. I don't know that for sure, but that is what I found out about how they often does it, it's not just, they don't use them simultaneously, it's either or.
I have something to ask or to mention about this.
Okay, commissioner, the end.
Sure, so. Usually, the problem in the past, I think, has more been with the code enforcement board that tends to lower the fines. The commission has increased some fines lately. As opposed to lower them, but usually this comes up when the property is being sold. So. I don't really see that we want, I don't really see that we want to take that power away from the commission. Because you have two issues, you have hardship and then you have the sale of a property to return it to productive use. And for the property on Central Avenue. Is a good example, it's got a hundred fifty seven thousand dollars worth of fines on it and if we can't. Have somebody break out that, that property will never be sold, so I'm just saying, this is the situation that we're in. It would be ideal if we could. Get enforcement going on a regular basis so that fines didn't stack up. But somehow, I mean, we have situations where they have, so, but. I, I like that dual, I like that, that flexibility that we keep our code board, but that if there's a necessity. We can have the option of using a magistrate. And I think that was in the Tallahassee ordinance, but I found, it just gives us what to know.
I think really we need to keep our, keep thinking that we gotta set it, I said we gotta board. I think the problem in the past, we haven't had nobody to go on the circuit, where we had a good board one time, then all of a sudden. Due to the deficit, the personal thing and another. It, it kinda went in that. But I, I, I think the commission should be, that's the people elected us, I think we should be. Find clue on the amount of the money that we charge. I think in the past. In the past, we just been taking it kinda lightly. And just producing it back just for the expense that we got in it.
That's what they shared with me is that. And then it comes up here to the commission and then you're blessing it and take away everything that we've just done.
But I think that we should have a motion, that's what I think, so.
Well, see.
You know, we, it's not honored and such time.
We've been taping it, taping it, taping it and, and not, and it ain't going nowhere. We said we're gonna have a workshop and workshop might be next year. Come up with something.
When do you think you would be, if we wanted to do a workshop, which we do, we've been putting this off.
Yeah.
Commissioner Banks and Commissioner Burton are both correct, when do you think you would be ready to do a workshop on this?
I mean, y'all give me a date of.
Charles, you wanna bring at the October general meeting, like date that we can agree on for the.
I can bring it back to you, I was also gonna request directions at that time to. Draft an amendment to the ordinance to reduce the number of board members from seven to five and the floor from five to three, I think that might assist with the process. But we can.
But we can, uh, hold on to that until the workshop is done. Given our schedule, the workshop won't happen until probably December. We have a, we have a lot of workshops, um, already scheduled.
Well, right now we have a, we, we actually have a code enforcement, um, board that is doing a pretty good job. So they, they can hold this up, I know, until December, but I, I do think we have to talk about this.
Mayor, can I come?
Yes.
What's the possibility continuing with our board? But if necessarily we use the, excuse me, magistrate? If we can get one from the county or on occasion as, as needed. I think every once in a while, we're gonna have a very difficult situation just like what Lisa mentioned with the old dry cleaning building down here. If anybody's ever used to know that used to be dry cleaners, but.
Eighty five, you're talking sale about two fifty.
Well, yeah.
Two, two thousand, two hundred thousand.
But from time to time, we're gonna have difficult situation. We may want to offer it to a magistrate. I'm just saying, I like the idea of our local board with the idea that occasionally we may use a magistrate.
And, I mean, I can, I think the ordinance would allow that. I mean, it just probably needs to be communicated that we're not doing this because we're unhappy with the code board. It's just we're in the future that we can use both of them.
Right.
Cause it still is gonna allow for the, the code board actually would come first and then after that in the ordinance, it would allow for the city to employ a magistrate if they needed to.
Right.
Whether it was a complicated case or they couldn't get a, whatever it may be.
That's something that we can, I, I agree. We need to put this to a workshop and I hope that the last, the last time it was discussed that we did convey that to our board, that we were very appreciative and it wasn't because you know, and how much we appreciate what they're doing. And I got feedback from them that they, that they did, they felt that way, so.
And, and I can go ahead and advance to that workshop draft, a draft ordinance so y'all can see what it would look like. I mean, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be good.
Mayor, if I could just clarify one thing, and especially while Bobby's here. I think the situation of the dry cleaning building doesn't really apply to needing a magistrate unless there's further violation because that's one that's been through the process, correct?
That is a year ago.
It's already been through the process. It's got a lien on it. So it would be a case like that, but not, and.
Right, who's using that as an example?
Okay, yeah, but I just want people to understand it doesn't have to go through another court, hopefully.
I was just using that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't refer to the, I apologize.
That's okay.
What else do you, do you have anything else you?
That's, that's, um, I mean, obviously there's some things that we can do in the legal realm, which there is a hundred fifty five thousand dollar lien on.
Yeah.
Now, we can, but that's.
And he's got multiple things. I think that's wrapped up on multiple properties too, doesn't he have multiple properties?
Yeah.
Yeah, multiple properties, so, okay.
Mayor, I'm, I'm putting together a presentation for you all in the future of all the properties in which we have liens with, with, you know, recommendation to, to look at foreclosure on those larger.
Thank you. That'll be, um, um, Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry. I'm just so used to saying Commissioner Pickens.
I don't have anything else.
That's it?
Unless there's questions.
Okay, you're good. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for Commissioner.
I, I have a question about something that Bobby didn't mention, but it comes under the legal realm. It does not, does it not usually when we ask it, when it's?
Um, do you wanna put it under your Commissioner, um, items?
Not really. No.
Okay, do you wanna ask Bobby? Go ahead and ask Bobby.
Well, it's, this is complicated. Um, at a prior meeting, uh, one of our residents, Beth Roush, who lives on South Prospect next to the RV park, came and asked, um, about the status of the permits for the RV park and also were they supposed to be clearing before the, because there was no final site plan. Um, and she was told at that time, uh, I think by Mr. Leary, that they were just clearing pine trees. And that was agricultural, so they could do it. Um, I asked Charles about it and Charles said, well, they have to clear the property, um, so that, I don't know, so have to clear the property so that we can have the final site plan. I have looked at our code. Our code is pretty clear. There's two parts that to me, well, actually there's three things that apply. One, uh, there's the development code. Two, the development code references the, um, eighteen point five, the, the treaty provisions of our code. And it says very clearly that before any construction is to begin, that they are supposed to have the tree board get involved in the preparation of the site plan and they're supposed to identify trees to be saved and identify trees, identify trees that are supposed to be protected before construction. Well, that has not occurred. So it seems to me that number one, Ms. Roush wasn't given the correct information because she said, why are they clearing when there's no final site plan? Uh, Mr. Red took me there the other day to talk to Ryan Gilmore and he said at that time, well, we have to clear this land before we can do the soil borings to figure out our, the requirements that we're going to have, I guess, with the water management district for the, um, sways, the retention sways. But I don't see anything, um, I don't see anything in their uh, development proposal. They didn't mention that. It, and actually their development proposal.
Okay, so what's your question for Bobby? I'm kinda wanting, let's, where, where are we going with this for Bobby? What do you need from?
Well, this is for us. Um, how, how did we get in this posture? We had a resident ask a question and I think she had a good question that did not get answered appropriately because I think it is in their, I think it is in their proposal even, that's first part that says that they are not to do any construction until they have the final site plan approval.
Okay, construction. Now, let's define construction.
It's, no, it says land clearing.
It says land clearing?
Yeah.
Until they get, what, a site plan approval?
Yeah.
Did in the initial site plan approval, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And he's looking right now that that's probably gonna be the final site plan approval. That's what he shared with me when I walked the property with him as well. Did he show that with you?
Yes, but I don't think that's what our code contemplates. Sure, what is this, that's, uh.
You know, um.
Okay, what I'm saying is we've had quite a turnover of personnel here. So I want to make sure that number one, the city is, you know, approving this construction activity in the proper order and that a resident who comes and asks about it gets the correct information. I don't see any intention for them to clear the pine trees under an agricultural exemption. I mean, if you look at eighteen point five, I just don't see that there. In fact, they're supposed to have a plan for that.
Okay, so what's your solution?
Yeah.
That's, I, I mean, that's no, 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 wait a second. You're bringing this up.
Yeah.
And this happens a lot. And I would like to know what your recommendation is at this point in time because those pine trees are no longer on that property.
Well, that's not for me to make the recommendation. I'm saying we have a situation here where it is not clear to me that all the steps that should have been in place are in place. And that's, I mean, I'm not a land use attorney and I'm not the city attorney.
So what is your?
So this is my question for Bobby is how, you know, how did we get in this situation? Can he answer for us whether they're allowed to clear before they actually have, there's no, there's no activity that's occurred to identify trees to be protected or, um, or trees to be preserved. They're doing that on their own.
Yes, Commissioner Burton.
You know, right now we have a John in the block, I don't know how many acres.
Fourteen, a little over fourteen acres.
And, um, basically he owns that property. And I believe under court is statute and of course I'm not very, I'm not a lawyer, so I wouldn't know, but I do know the trees on my property. If I want to cut them down, I can because they are on my property. Um, they're his property. It's his property right now. And, and I know, you know, I've met Ryan and I've met who he is and, and I saw his plan and I liked his plan. He voted to go ahead and let him move forward because he's got a pretty good solid plan. So I, I'm not sure why all of a sudden we're, we're stuck on him taking timber out. I mean, it's gonna be in our RE park that, that scrub timbers that come out to make room for what he's trying to do. And, and I don't hear a solution. Like, like, it's true, the trees are gone. What do we wanna do? Do we put them in jail now, I guess? Do we take land away from them now?
The oak trees are still there.
The oak trees are there.
The oak trees are still there.
And that front area, um, the front area, he said, was, I guess, cleared about twenty years ago. So we did not allow for, and he was disappointed as well when we actually went in there because he said it didn't allow for the, the shading that they were hoping to get with what was in there, what, what was in there. But go ahead, Commissioner Banks.
Well, you know, we appetizing, pleading for businesses to come in the Crescent City. And every, every little clue looked like we trying to question it. I remember when, uh, on the hill down here where the old horse field was, uh, we were trying to get that business. Dr. Fletcher, uh, when he owned it, he was trying to sell it and it looked like we did everything that we possible could to keep that business from coming in Crescent City. Now it's blooming, it high in people. So why are we pressing this man down here about a tree?
Yeah.
So hard. Why are we pressing?
Hold on just a second. The, we have approved a planned unit development. That is a legal document. It is supposed to be reported. Does that help, correct Bobby?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, let her finish, let her finish, let her finish, please.
Okay, I am not finished.
No.
A resident came to ask, a resident came to ask about this. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Uh, look, commissioners.
Okay, so I, I'm not the one interrupting. So a planned unit development is a legal document. It is for the protection of the neighbors. It is for the protection of the environment that we were just talking about the environment and what can we do? So we are supposed to operate under the law and under the rules that we passed. And we had a number of discussions when St. John's Recovery Place was, um, developed under a planned unit development. So as the city of Crescent City, and my question is for the attorney, um, where does that leave us? Actually, exhibit one to the development agreement in paragraph, uh, paragraph A three seems to say after the preliminary plan is reported and prior to issuance of any permits for construction, including clearing and landfill, the final site approval application must be submitted and approved in accordance with section chapter five of the city's land development code and that references chapter eighteen point five. So what I'm saying is we appear to have left out a step. And part of the rationale of all that, um, is to make sure that the site plan is prepared according to the city's standards to protect the lake, to protect the neighbors and not necessarily, uh, what we approve does not say
Okay.
what we're allowing to have.
So going forward, so going, so at this point in time, we've gotta go forward. Mr. Red, as we go forward, will you, in speaking to Ryan and Patrick Kennedy, just make sure that we stay on track the way we're supposed to?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, with that said, I, I do wanna say something. Okay. I've been down there. I live right there.
Yeah, well.
Um, Ryan is trying very hard to be a good neighbor. He is putting five point five million dollars into that property. Who in the last time would somebody put five million dollars into property here in Crescent City? Okay, wait a second. Ms. Roush, he's trying to be a very good neighbor to Ms. Roush. As a matter of fact, she had, there was a tree that fell over in her driveway, whether she noticed or not. She came to him, she got a quote for four thousand dollars. He had his guy go out there and he had him remove it and he paid half the cost and saved her about three thousand dollars. So he's trying very hard to be a good neighbor to Ms. Roush. And I think he's trying to be a good neighbor to all of us.
Yeah.
And so what we've got to be very careful is that we, as people coming here, just like Commissioner Banks said, I am gonna get on my soapbox a little bit because we're trying to go forward in this city and we don't want people to feel like that we're gonna beat them up the entire way. And that's exactly what I feel like we're doing right now. And so that, with that said.
Okay, if, ma'am, if I could, please, you may feel that we're trying to beat them up. That is not the case.
We are trying to beat them up.
You, you said we, it's not a matter of trying to beat them up.
I did say we.
It is very important, I think, that we follow our procedures and we follow the law. And my question was for Mr. Pickens. What did we do uh, when we don't follow the appropriate procedures for the approval of the site and the plans that are supposed to go with them? I mean, essentially and what I hear you saying, Mayor, is that as long as someone's a good neighbor, that it doesn't matter.
No, I did not. Do not put words in my mouth. I did not say that. I asked them to make sure as we go forward.
Right.
Because this is on us, Commissioner DeVito. This is on us too, because we didn't make him adhere to this. We have not been down there. And so this is on us as well. This is on the city as well.
It, that's my whole point.
So go ahead, Commissioner, Mr. Pickens.
The city issue.
So I, I mean, I think, I, I think that was all done before, um, we were here. I think that was the prior. I, if the commission wants me to, I would suggest if it's something that y'all want to do is that I can write a letter to them assuring them to follow and remind them of what they agreed to in the plan. Um, I mean, but obviously every legal action you take can have a recourse. Um, but, and I, I don't know if they're following it or not. I, I'm not, it wasn't on my agenda, so I'm not up to all of the stuff in the tree code and all that stuff. But if, if you're saying, and I have no reason to doubt you that they're not following the plan.
Well, I think of, I don't think we followed the procedure. We have allowed them to clear the property without going through the steps that are specified in the ordinances and in the actual planned unit development agreement. We skipped a step.
So as we go forward, we just, we're gonna look to both of you to make sure that we don't skip any more steps.
Well, but how so?
What do you want to, what is your solution, Commissioner DeVito? That's what I'm trying to get at. So we skipped a step. So what do we do now? Do you wanna put us in jail? I mean, I'm just saying, no, I'm, I know, I'm, no, I, I'm asking you, if you're gonna bring this up as a concern, what is your solution? We need a solution.
Well, it's, it is a matter of, I think, a legal opinion. What does the city do when they have skipped steps and not required something that's in
Okay.
the approved development agreement to call us. I can't just make it up as I go along. And I don't really think that's appropriate to ask, do I wanna put us all in jail? Of course not.
Well, I mean, I'm just outlining this aspect. This is a question.
I said, so on the October fourteenth meeting, I and my report, I'll talk about what the negative impacts and what can happen if all the steps weren't followed exactly. There's no way for me to know that off the top of my head. But on the fourteenth, I will have an answer as to what, if there's anything that we can do to fix it or if it, if something that can be forgiven or something like that.
And you might wanna talk to Mr. Kennedy too. He's still, he's still representing him. I asked him yesterday and he said, yes, he's still representing him, so. Okay. Is that good, Commissioner DeVito?
Well, Bobby's gonna get us an answer. That's what I'm looking for.
Thank you.
But I mean, also I think we need to work at.
Okay, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna ask for the commissioner to have their comments at this time. Okay? So I'm gonna start down on this end of the room. Commissioner Burton, do you have anything?
Well, I just have a motion that constituent asked me to make tonight. And it's really to add new events, you know, as people come in, uh, with applications to add the events to the. To add the events to the city calendar as soon as the applications are approved. She, she's very involved with the different events around town. And she said, one thing that we lack is we are having events that we do. So, when we go on our city, uh, website, we don't look like we have no events going on. And so she just, she just says, well, how come? She, she wants it to be, when the application is approved, that at that point in time, somebody goes and puts it out to the website. I don't know if I need a motion for that.
I noticed that, I was gonna talk to Karen about that today, and that we do need somewhere on our website. Mr. Redd, Karen, that has events within the city.
Yeah, because they they say we're really lacking that, and and I agree, I agree.
We we can take care of that, you can just, through consensus, direct, direct me to the.
Commissioners, we all consent for that.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I do wanna piggyback on that for just a moment. The Chamber, actually, it's not the Chamber of Commerce, but the Tourist Development Council. They have what is now called Visit Tutten County. It's an app that you can get on your phone, your tablet, your computer. I encourage everybody to go on this, visit Tutten County, it's rigid. Um, Mr. King, you probably want to contact Julie at the Chamber. And make sure that she includes, you know, something in there that you do, the office supplies. For any of our restaurants, they can contact them and have them add there, and so what people can do is they can go on this Visit Tutten County. They can plan their whole trip, it can tell them everything that there is to do in the area, if there is an event, go ahead and get it registered with Julie. At the Chamber, it is a great tool for our events, for our businesses. Um, for our visitors and for our residents as well. That's the one, it should be in your app stores, you go in your app store, so, okay, that's it, I'll piggyback on that.
But I think it's just important.
Yeah, it is important.
We start to really market Crescent City.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Burton, do you have anything for?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Banks?
Yes, I have something in it. It's, it's kind of hard, very, because, you know, I think everybody should have a place to stay. And the reason I'm bringing it up. A couple of citizens called. And when I got on the phone with citizen number one, I stayed on there for. Thirty-five minutes. And she would tell me about people were down there in the, they go down there, they were lying poor, so. I've been passing by them. And I I say, well, maybe they getting ready for trick or treat. I seen all these different things hanging around on there. And that's what I told her, I say, I believe they getting ready for trick or treat, she say. Commission. I say, well, what's going on, then she started. So, I took the mention that I I, uh, the very next, very, very next few seconds. I was in my automobile and I was down there. And that place was terrible. Clothes. Uh, baskets. Canned goods. They were washing, eating hot, they they, uh, I think they were using some, I would like this with a hot plate. Yeah, so. I got busy, and so, very next morning, I came up and. Uh, well, not the next morning, evidently, somebody else had them told, I think she said she talked to the mayor.
She did. My, my conversation went a little longer.
She said she talked to the mayor. I say, now, you got to bear in mind, now, I say, now, we just can't blink. And then get back like they suppose, I say, it it, uh, it's, it's a way you have to do thing decent and in order. She said, okay, uh, all right, so she she agreed with that. So, uh, evidently, the the mayor had connected with our city manager. The very next morning, when I got early, to ride around that way. Everything was going, people clean. They had a pressure wash and everything. Well, yes, uh, that dusted out last night. I were riding around Grand Run though, and I seen all these people out to the edge of the road laying down with blankets. You know, what are going on? I'm talking to myself, and, uh, so this morning, I got up early. And man, I'm retired, I don't get up that early. But I I got up early, I got up about six o'clock. And right around that, they was in the bird watch. So, it's a problem, not only in Crescent City, but in other cities also. So, I I really think we need to look at a plan, I I don't know what the plan is.
I'm gonna throw something out right now.
Look like it's a chase.
Yeah.
You move it from here, I'm gonna go to the next place, so, uh, in the morning, I'm gonna ride around by Harriet Beck's Park.
Uh, that, you may not like this, but we've got a building we're trying to tear down. It's pretty grimy inside. What if we don't tear it down? We find a way to make it for people who are truly homeless, homeless, homeless. And have rooms with locks.
I think that right now, we're not, I understand, we all, it's a very, very sensitive subject and. And I'm speaking. Uh, but let me just finish, please. Um, I have worked with, uh, Captain Essery and and Charles, and we've been working on this this week. These two are not really necessarily homeless. These two that are going from place to place. My understanding is there were rules set at the house that they live at on, um, Chestnut. And they don't like the rules. And so what they've decided to do is that they've decided to go out on the road. And, um, they are moving from place to place, the deputies are moving them along, trying to at the evening. I spoke to, um, and I've got for everybody here, I mean, this is something that's gonna be. An issue that we're gonna have to probably eventually talk about, I spoke to Deland about this. The Neighborhood Center, and I've spoken to some other people. A lot of times when our people are homeless, it's not necessarily that they. They oftentimes, as heartless as it sounds, they want to be homeless.
Yeah.
And if not anything we can do about it, and this is an issue that in Tutten County, unfortunately, we really don't have. The resources here for our homeless, the Neighborhood Center in Deland, and I know they've just redone that down there. They have it, um, also, there is the first step, which is out there on International, Blue Zone International. They have it also for the homeless, they'll take them in, they'll help them with trying to find jobs, but they have rules. And a lot of times, why they're not in these homeless shelters is because they don't want to adhere to these rules. At the same time, right now, we've got an issue because they are using our parks, and this is the picture of them this afternoon. And they're sleeping in the bird watch area, and supposedly, they are having their evenings, and then they're sleeping all day. Um, they've had some issues where I know they've had some issues with the, um, at the bathrooms with them. So, we, I think, the commission, we've got to, um. Decide what it is that we want to do as far as addressing this, and I spoke to Deland, and they also have this issue. And so they have these ordinances about sleeping on public sidewalk streets, alleyways and benches when you're eighteen and over. Um, so something for us to look at. Right now, um, they're not, there's not much that they can do with them during the day because we don't have anything. That, um. Keeps anybody from using our parks during the day, according to, you know, and and talking to the captain, the captain spent. At least an hour talking to them today. Um, so, but we, I mean, the only other thing they can do is they can get them for trespassing. And, you know, if they become a nuisance. So, we, the commission, we really need to discuss this, I think homeless, homeless is a whole nother issue. But right now, we've got to do something with what's going on with, with this group.
But, if I'm not misspeaking, uh. A lady came down and spoke to us, spoke to the commission. On on this matter.
Yes, she did.
You remember, yeah, I can't think of name, but I I know one of the ladies that were. Associated with the organization in Black, I'm I'm gonna try to reach out to her. I'm gonna try to reach out to her, call, uh, that is going on in Black.
It is.
Yeah.
And they're sending some of them over to St. Augustine, I know that St. Augustine does have a facility for them. Commissioner De Vito, you said you had something you needed to, you wanted to say on this as well.
Yeah, I have something I want to share. As I told y'all, um, I am representing the League of Cities on the State Council of Homeless. Which I helped write it to law twenty years ago, then I used to chair. So, Tutten County, you are correct, does not have services to serve homeless people. They should have, it is a county responsibility for social services, not city, cities. Um, are places where persons who are homeless hang out because we have. Convenience stores and bathrooms and shelters, as the mayor's, we've all seen. Um, but social services is a county responsibility. For homeless services, we are in what's called a catchment area. Every county in the state is in a, is assigned to a continuum of care, catchment area. Ours is based in Gainesville, we are not in the catchment area in Deland or St. Augustine. Um, I have been concerned for some time about the lack of services in Tutten County. This is not the first instance of homelessness we've had here in Crescent City, for the past three years. We've had people sleeping in the park, we've not had this level of, um, camping, but we've had.
Openness, this openness.
Well, they, they have their possess, we've had people who are passing through, just recently. There was someone in a church parking lot sleeping in a car, people have tried to help her, but we have had this problem for the past three years and. Um, I wrote, because, you know, the gazebo is right across from our house, and it was brought to my attention and whatever. Um, I wrote to our county commissioners. Um, we really do not have a shelter or basic outreach services, and as the mayor's pointed out, um. Captain Essery spent some time with these people, you have, you have to have some kind of outreach services. So, tomorrow, and this was already on the books. I have a Zoom appointment with the people who run our league agency. And I am going to try to figure out, this is more a midterm or long-term solution. Um, why is it that Tutten does not participate, what is it that we do or don't do? Um, what can we do to connect up with. Resources that are available, and you know, the state doesn't give you anything for free, you have to have your local match, but I know for sure. Um, Tutten County does not adequately participate in the head required annual census called point time count. Um, the lady who came and talked to us came because a couple of years ago, um, I connected with them about the point in time count. Um, somebody at SMA was trying to get South Tutten covered, usually, South Tutten is not covered. The sheriff does not participate, so, if you don't participate in the point in time count, your people don't get enumerated. And your data doesn't get, that that's just a basic level, so anyway.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk to the people who are in charge of our catchment area and see what I find. But my feeling is, and I will distribute to y'all at some point when I can make more copies or a little bit of the Karen. Um, what I wrote to Terry Sides in the county commission. Because I agree, I mean, we have a short-term problem, but we also have a long-term problem, and, um. You know, I have found to run a homeless shelter, it's a lot of money, Crescent City does not have the money to do it.
We just don't have the resources, we've got so many other things, we just don't have the resources and.
Let's, let's put it this way, it. It is just way beyond our means, it's really a county thing, so anyway. Um, we have all tried to do what each of us can do. Um, so that is my mission tomorrow, at eleven o'clock, to talk to people. Um, who can give us a little background on what it is that can be done, maybe in Tutten County. But I think, and Mayor, this is where I know you talked to the other cities. Um, I have, you know, I talked to them about the point in time count, they didn't know anything about it, I don't know if they have problems with homeless stuff.
Who is that?
The other cities in South Tutten, Black. Um, I don't know, but for sure, Crescent City has. We have the kind of facilities that people who are homeless are going to gravitate to, and we're going to need county help, which we are for sure. So.
Well, we have to have something in our ordinances too, that that gives them the ability to do what they need to do with this, with this situation. So, when do we have, when do we have our workshop on the parks? Is is it just on the signs or is it on?
It's on, um, signs, I mean, associated signs.
Okay, so this is some language that possibly we could add into that, Bobby, if you look at this. You know, I talked about this this afternoon. But some of it hits, I mean, just right there, the very first one, it hits it right there, and it would give, it would give the deputies, there's a difference between. There's a difference between being unfortunate circumstances and and finding yourself homeless. And choosing to be homeless and camping out where you know you really should not be, and camping out the way you're camping out, and. Commissioner Banks, you were right, the sheriff's department got involved, they went in there, they had them move their stuff, clean their stuff out of there. And then Ronnie went in there and he pressure washed it, so it was really very, very, um, it was, it was, it was nasty. It was Charles, we walked through there, and and it was nasty in the gazebo, and that's open for the public because, so. Um, we can either wait, but right now, we still, they're still out there, so, these two. Um, and you know, we only have, you know, two square miles, so it's kinda hard to hide.
Oh, Mayor.
Yes.
Um. Some residents have been discussing this on social media, there is a shelter in West Deland, it's on social media, I forget the name of it. But, um, and I don't know where these people are from or what their abilities are. Um, but the person who runs the shelter, West Belusha suggested that they come down there.
The Neighborhood Center and that other one I told you, the first step, those are the two down in the Deland area, Neighborhood Center's been there forever. And they just did a re, they just, I guess, remodeled it, the Salvation Army does it over in Daytona Beach, the Salvation Army in Deland is not.
This one specifically came on social media and said, give the people this information, I will print it off and share it. I was a little surprised, cause usually they don't want people to knock in their county, but if it's help being offered.
Well, and we ta, I talked about that with Salvation Army, and they said, but if they're homeless, they really don't have a county, so how do you tell them, you know, so it's kinda that catch twenty-two, where are they?
It, it depends, it depends on what the shelter wants to do, but if they're offering.
I understand, I asked them if it was just open to Belusha or.
Right, so I will print, I will print it off, well, sometimes they don't like.
Okay, but again, that's in dealing with our homeless, these are dealing with two young people that. So, commission, do we have any, any thoughts, any ideas, do we want to direct the, um. I don't even know, Bobby, can we do that, can we direct the deputies that if they are sleeping. Without us having the ordinance in place, that they can, they can't do anything to them for trespassing?
I wouldn't think so, I mean, if they're there at nine.
If they're, they're not, they do it all, yeah, and they all know.
They're violating, if, if there's any ordinance on our books about anything dealing with the parks, and I think they could issue them a. Uh, trespass warning, and if they could come back right around if they're not gone.
But during the day, until we, until we decide otherwise during the day, they're.
They're illegal.
They're legal, they're legal, so.
Correct.
When you're talking to the residents, please make sure they know that we are addressing this, and we're trying to do the very best we can based of what we have. Based with what we have in front of us. Based with what we have in front of us.
That's very clever, that they're sleeping during the day and.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's it's a necessity. But Mayor, one thing that concerns me in all this is that, and some people raised this. You know, when the deputies are here, they don't seem to notice this until someone raises it. So we, that might be something to address with Captain Essery. That, you know, instead of waiting for the residents to break it up, this is something that we would like them to look out for.
Well, see, Mayor, did you see this happen for a time recently? Because they were behind the gas station there, and I think the city went and cleaned. They probably, they were behind the library, right uptown up there.
They were over in Dexter Park, and then they got moved out of Dexter Park. They moved them out of Dexter and they moved them over here.
That's not the same people.
No, this one is, these are, these are, one of them is a resident. Yeah, one of them is a resident, and you just. The young, the young man said he's waiting on some money and then they're gonna move on. That's what he told him today. As soon as he gets his money, they're moving, they're heading out of here. So.
Well. I mean, I personally, I think that, um, I don't, I don't like to see people arrested just at the drop of the hat. It's called criminalization of homelessness. It's, it's hard enough for people to get housing without having a record, but our, our park rules are very, very, um, loose. They do not address.
So when we have our workshop, we'll work on that.
Okay, so we're, and which workshop are we doing that in?
What's the date on that that we have?
I don't know. I think it might be the end of October.
Oh, we got, the whole month of October workshop.
Just, I mean, here, which, which workshop are we saying we're gonna finish this happening?
When we do, yes, when we do our sign their files.
Sign their files.
Okay, Commissioner Banks, do you have, you you good?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner West?
I'm good.
Hey, Commissioner DeVito?
Yeah, um. That was. That was very correct, but I lost my train of thought. Um.
Okay, you have your list of.
Hold on, hold on. I gotta, I gotta find my list.
We're ready.
Okay, we did, we did homeless persons. Um, just something I mentioned at the budget that I really did want to, uh, ask of Charles is that can we get at our next meeting reports on what the Clarion and Inspire Technology have accomplished? Um, especially with Clarion, you know, they told us, I haven't looked up contact recently, but they, they told us they can be done in six months. We signed up for a year in case we needed them to get the same price. That was Jay's recommendation. But they said six months. Um, I think it's time for them to give us a report on what they've accomplished and how much longer they need to be here.
And Charles, you've been in direct, especially just recently, you've been in direct contact with them. But you've also had this discussion as to how much longer can we wrap this up?
Yes.
You said you want to address.
So I can, I can have them create a, a summary, send me a summary and and give you a presentation on their progress as well as Inspire.
Right, because they had said in the past that that they would do that, because, you know, I've seen a lot of, um, a lot of invoices from Inspire for equipment that I don't remember being in the original proposal. Um, also, I wanted to mention, um, we, the State Forester sent me information on, uh, ability, uh, state tree grant from the Department of Agriculture that we have the, would have had the ability to apply for. Um, he didn't send it to me until about a month had gone by. The application period is over on October eighth. Um, I did research on this. Davy, Davy Resource Group that did our original, uh, tree inventory and tree plan would have been able to help us. Um, but I think we're gonna run out of time this year. I talked to folks about it. Um, but maybe that's something that we could do next year. Um, as well, something I wanted to share with everyone, um, from the city of Newport Ritchie. They have they have an ordinance that they adopted. And they also have, um.
What's the ordinance on? I'm sorry, I'm just trying. It's getting a little warm in here. You know, if I'm hot, everybody else is hot.
So, and this relates to some of the things that we, the workshops that we attended at the League of Cities. Um, the last page, the ordinance is on procedures for conducting city council meetings, setting forth rules of conduct for elected officials. Um, the very last page of the ordinance, um, is standards of conduct of city business for elected officials. And it essentially, um, I thought it was very good. It emphasizes that the city council or commission is a collegial body um, that must operate as a unit in order to act in any official capacity. And it's just, it's very simple. It's one page. Um, it has just some aspirational elements and some ideas about how the meetings will be conducted. So.
Okay, well, if you'll share that with Bobby and and both Charles, and they can look at it with us as well, if you would.
Actually, it's something I wanted everyone to read and that we could discuss at a later time, but it's on the very last part.
Okay, if we ever have our procedures workshop, and I think I've asked for since November.
Well, I don't, this, this is pretty simple. I don't think we need.
So you made copies for everybody already? You have copies for all of us?
I have copies for the commissioners and I have one copy for Karen. And I don't have copies of other Charles.
Okay.
Um, but Karen has.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So, and that's, that's the very, that's the very last page.
Okay.
I got you.
Well, the rules issue it. But thank you. And, yeah. Leave this alone. Okay, you good?
Right, but I can't read.
Okay, just out of respect for everybody, Commissioner, I just, I think, you know, the likes. I think everybody was thinking this was gonna be about an hour long.
Everyone had their issues, and out of respect for me, I think.
And we are, and we are.
And, no, I I think. I'm sorry, and.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Burton?
I don't laugh when other people are talking, and I would appreciate. That's just, that I, I handed, I handed out this document from Newport Ritchie because I thought it was very instructive and informational and would help us do our business in a better fashion.
Thank you, and we do need that. We do definitely need that. Any improvement. I'm not improving every day. You need to be. So.
So, and I want to check, but I think that was my last.
I think we've covered a lot here tonight. Everybody good?
Oh, and I think, don't worry, we should actually have a motion to adjourn before we adjourn. I think that's the way meetings are usually done.
Have y'all always had motions to adjourn, I guess, then we can, from now forward, we will have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me, Post, May. Okay, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-two. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.